Yeah, five thirty. Okay, it's five thirty and we have a quorum. So if Chair Bossler, you want to start the meeting, you're welcome to.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you to everybody for being here. I want to welcome everybody. My name is Anne Bossler. I'm the Chair of the Policy and Funding Committee of the City of San Diego Commission for Arts and Culture. Thank you so much for joining us this evening for our special committee meeting. We have particular protocols for virtual meetings to ensure the highest possible level of transparency and access for our community. So if you would, please bear with us. I'd like to ask my colleagues on the committee, if you would, please keep your video on throughout the meeting to help remain as accessible as possible to our audience. And I'd like to ask the same of the participating staff. And now what we're going to do is a quick roll call to confirm commissioner attendance. When I call your name, please unmute yourself and say present. Before I do that, I'd like to inform the committee and the public that Commissioner Keith Upstead's term has expired. And we want to thank him for his service and say that we will miss him. Let's see here, Commissioner regarding attendance, Commissioner Rebecca Smith. I don't think she's with us this evening. Commissioner Udoka Nwana. Commissioner Tyler Hughes.
Present.
Thank you. Good evening. Commissioner Tracy DeZenzio. Present. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your attendance. Also joining us will be city staff, including our Executive Director Jonathan Glass, our Chief of Civic Art Strategies Christine Jones, our Senior Arts and Culture Funding Manager Deanna Augustini, and our Arts and Culture Program Manager Carla Centeno. Before we get into today's agenda, I'm going to call on Deanna to please review the guidelines with us for today's meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you. Hello, everyone. So as you, as you know, we are conducting these meetings as a Zoom webinar. In an effort to provide greater accessibility, members of the public may join the meeting as webinar attendees. And they can provide virtual non-agenda and agenda comments in real time. Committee members, city staff, and authorized presenters are attending the meeting as panelists, and the meeting will function for them identically to a typical Zoom meeting. As a refresher, please note the buttons on the control bar at the bottom of the Zoom window. The camera icon is to activate your video. The microphone is to mute and unmute. And please remember to stay muted when you're not talking and to unmute yourself when you speak. You will also see the chat window button. Please keep your chat window open at all times, as you will be using the chat to say no when you'd like to speak. We do recognize that there is a hand raising function. However, we request that you type speak in the chat window for the record, and the chair will acknowledge requests in order. When wanting to make a motion, second emotion, or participate in a discussion, please type speak in the chat box, and Chair Bossler will call on you in the order entered. Please refrain from using the meeting chat for anything other than signaling that you'd like to speak in order to comply with the Brown Act. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. At this point, we're going to go to the non-agenda public comment. And Policy and Funding Committee is conducting today's special meeting to hear and discuss staff priorities and recommendations for both OSP and CCSD for the fiscal year twenty-three and beyond, the funding cycles, and to listen to the public comment in order to make future recommendations. While the second part of today's agenda is fully dedicated to public comment on our presentation item, this section of the agenda is for non-agenda public comment. The public was invited to submit public comment on agenda and non-agenda items via a web form accessible through the agenda and the commission's website. Members of the public may also join this meeting as webinar attendees. If members of the public have submitted comments in writing via the web form, staff will read aloud public comments submitted per city public comment protocol. I will call on staff to read aloud any non-agenda public comment or to call on any attendee who would like to provide such comment.
Thank you. So we didn't receive any written public comments. And to the member in the public in attendance, please click the button to raise your hand to indicate that you would like to comment. And I will enable you to speak and send you a prompt to unmute yourself in order. When I call your name, please state name for the record, and you will have three minutes to provide comment, after which you will be placed on mute again. If you're joining via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and I will call on you by the last four digits of your phone number. When I call on you, press star six to unmute yourself, and please raise your hand now if you would like to provide non-agenda public comment. I see there is one comment, and it's Peter. Peter, I'm going to allow you to speak and start the three minutes. You should be able to speak now.
I can. Thank you, Diana. And ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for running this this evening. Just a super quick comment. I just wanted to recognize members of our, the, the commission, and also of the arts and culture ecosystem throughout San Diego. Over the past three weeks, there have been some eighty, eight zero different people who have made comments at council and budget hearings, all in support of arts and culture, both tiny organizations, medium, and large. So I just want to recognize them here tonight. And thank you for creating an environment where those people feel comfortable and enthusiastic to support arts and culture. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And there are no more comments.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. So next on the agenda would be the Chair's report. And at this point, we do not have any commission business, nor do we have any other reports. So we're going to move into the, the presentation. So the priorities for fiscal year twenty-three OSP and CCSD funding cycle, and we have one, one item that staff will be presenting today, and no action from the committee is required on this item. This portion of the meeting is structured in the following manner. Staff will present recommendations and following that committee, and I'm sorry, following that, committee members will have the opportunity to respond. I will ask committee members to keep questions brief. After committee members' comments and questions, we will then open the meeting to public comment. So at this point, I'm going to ask staff to please read any written comments submitted prior to the meeting and to invite members of the public who are in the audience to provide general comments now before the presentation. Members of public who are in the audience will also be able to provide comments after having heard the city staff's presentation during our second agenda item, which is fully dedicated to public comments. Deanna, were there any written comments submitted?
No agenda public comment was submitted for this item. And if any member of the public in attendance would like to make any comments, please again click the button to raise your hand now, or press star nine if you're joining by phone to indicate that you would like to provide non-agenda public comment, and I will enable you to speak. If anyone shows interest, please do it now, and I will let you speak. Doesn't look like there are any comments before the presentation.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much. So before moving on with this agenda item, I'd like to remind our commissioners, if you'd please keep your comments or questions within the allocated timeframe for the agenda item, if possible, in order to make sure we have ample time for public comment. Commissioners, feel free to ask questions either during or after the staff presentation. And so, Deanna, if you would, please feel free to go ahead and move on with your presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, we have an exciting presentation for tonight. So here we go with the next slide, please. We, again, we are very happy to share with you today an overview of our areas of focus for the fiscal year twenty-three funding cycle. While all of the work that we're focusing on has an equity implication, we wanted on this slide to single out some of the DI recommendations as they relate to multiple priorities that city staff is working on, both in relation to short-term and long-term changes. One of our overarching goals is to reduce barriers for applicants at various key stages of the annual funding cycle in order to increase accessibility to our funding for everyone. This, for example, includes providing the most effective support based on their situation prior to applications opening and also during both the RFQ and the RFP periods. We shared at our previous meeting for this committee during the recap of fiscal year twenty-two, many of our new technical assistance opportunities and nurturing efforts that were very well received last during this past year, and that had a positive impact on applicants. And therefore, we plan not only on continuing with some of these initiatives, but also on expanding them. But reducing barriers also means doing a close analysis of our current application and contracting requirements and making changes wherever possible to reduce redundancies and eliminate unnecessary reporting while keeping in line with the city's contracting needs and policy requirements. Much of what we discussed today is achievable through administrative changes at the staff level. However, there are a few key areas that would necessitate a revision of our council policy. After this presentation tonight, we'll bring back to you to the June Policy and Funding Committee meeting, specific recommendations for fiscal year twenty-three with details on what administrative or policy recommendations will help us achieve our objective. But to start with, I like to highlight some of the key changes that are directly responsive to stakeholder input over the past year, including contractors, internal departments, commissioners, community comment at the past meetings, and also the DI report that was conducted by RISE Research. So if we move on to the next slide. So to start, we, we, we will see a shift in how the city identifies funding recipients. And we're moving from organizations providing services to the city to funding recipients receiving financial assistance from the city. So while this may seem just a semantic exchange, it's actually very, it's actually key in defining the relationship between the city and the funding recipients. And it's important in order to advancing somewhat the proposed changes to city regulations. An important example of this change, which we hope will be really well received tonight, is the insurance requirement. We're happy to officially share that beginning with fiscal year twenty-two, we can eliminate all of the insurance requirements for both OSP and CCSD recipients. This is something that staff, especially Christine Jones, has been working on for months and was recently approved by the city. And over the years, funding recipients have shared with us that insurance is a significant cost, especially for smaller organizations, and it represents an added time-consuming requirement that discourages organizations to apply. This removes time-consuming back and forth between organization and their insurance companies, and it will also be tremendously saving time internally, eliminating processes among various city departments and the insurance vendors. So in practical terms, this means that a contract that may have taken up to four months to process in the past may potentially be processed in less than a month now. And this will be a huge benefit for the organizations where, especially those where cash flow is a concern. Another consistent comment from applicants and contractors has been related to the requirement to submit information through data arts, on top of all the other requirements that are part of our application process. We've internally reviewed the data collection methodology on the part of data arts, and we can now safely eliminate the entire data arts process from the contracting system. This means that we will still capture the information that we, what is needed as part of final reports and working with analytics department as well in integrating that. This will save our applicants and funded organization many, many hours per organization, and it will also eliminate a huge barrier to the funding program for new applicants and volunteer-run organizations. So these first three key changes that we are going to implement for fiscal year twenty-three and as early as fiscal year twenty-two are administrative and can be changed at the staff level. The next two will require some policy changes, and we will have more details related to this at the upcoming meeting of the Policy and Funding Committee on June eleventh. Just to give a, an overview, though, we are hoping to receive, to reduce eligibility requirements for a nonprofit to apply for funding to better align with national best practices. And this means reducing the threshold from three years to two years. We're also hoping to introduce more flexibility in the payment schedule and allow for advanced payments instead of waiting for reimbursement-only process. So these five key changes will be significant. We believe in reducing barriers and promoting further, further opportunities for new applicants and small organizations. But as we shared also before, these are not the only ones that we're working on, and we hope to introduce during fiscal year twenty-three. So now we'll take a look at additional administrative priorities that we plan on implementing for fiscal year twenty-three. So in the next slide, we will start with the expansion of technical assistance. So during fiscal year twenty-two, we prioritize the expansion of technical assistance opportunities and also the cultivation of new applicants. This work resulted in eighteen new applications, new applicants, and a record number that we can, for what we can remember. For fiscal year twenty-three, of course, we intend to build on this work and to address also the DI recommendations proposed by RISE Research and Analytics. In terms of technical assistance, the first one to gather information from, directly from our communities to determine topics and that are relevant to them is something we do throughout application and funding cycle, but something we will continue to expand on. So today's meeting, for example, demonstrates our commitment to more direct and continued engagement with the larger community, and in particular with prospective applicants. We will continue to build out listening sessions as well as more targeted technical assistance opportunities. And here are a few examples. Responding to comments from past applicants, we plan to adjust the schedule of our technical assistance opportunities offered throughout the year in order to better accommodate the needs of the community. This also translates in offering workshops at different times during the day, including evenings and weekends. And last year, as we shared, we offered a well-attended fiscal sponsorship one-on-one workshop, which will definitely continue this year as well. But in addition to that, this year, we're working to build a bench of qualified fiscal agents across the city, building on the past year's work. And in fact, we're currently beginning to compile a list of pre-qualified fiscal sponsors from all of the city council districts to facilitate the introduction and pairing of applicants who may not meet our eligibility requirements, and specifically either because they're not a five oh one C three or don't have the required history of operations that we're currently asking for, and so to domestify this process. We are also working to refine the relationship between the city, the fiscal agents, and the funding recipients, meaning that our goal is to identify the art organization or the collective as the official applicant instead of having the fiscal agent being identified as the applicant. That will allow a fiscal agent, for example, to potentially sponsor more than one applicant and will increase also access to funding, we hope, at the community level. Importantly, this does not encourage the creation of five oh one C threes with all the related cumbersome administrative aspects of a nonprofit when it isn't really necessary. And it will also remove barriers to volunteer-run and artist-driven initiatives that deserve funding but don't necessarily need the nonprofit infrastructure. We, we also understand the efforts that go into submitting the required financial documentation, especially during the RFQ period, and how that in itself may be discouraging to new applicants or to volunteer-run organizations. So last year, we introduced additional training, including videos, to help applicants prepare their Luna calculation. And like we mentioned earlier, also, we will eliminate the data art requirement. And that is part of our efforts, again, to reduce the upfront time to prepare for the RFQ or the preliminary application. So in the next slide, you will talk about the cultivation of new applicants. We saw again the work that was done during fiscal year twenty-two by city staff through both internal outreach and external collaboration, and we plan to continue all of those efforts and develop further. City staff has been providing support in Spanish as requested by applicants through one-on-one consultations and also offering translator material as requested. Our funding team is fluent in both English and Spanish, and so we have Spanish language assistance that it's available also during regular business hours as well. We want to remind that to our applicants. And we will continue to provide Spanish language materials, such as guidelines, and expand also our Spanish language digital and print efforts. At the same time, we also recognize that many other languages besides Spanish and English are spoken by our residents. And the city has the capacity to provide translation services in other languages if requested in advance. However, the, these two languages, English and Spanish, are accessible on a daily basis. Last year, we were also very successful in creating an expanded network of external partners, and our intention is to continue to build on those partnerships. We will again ask every council member to host a funding workshop for us in their own districts while also asking their assistance in identifying the fiscal agents I, I talked about before. We will again ask other boards and commissions to co-host workshops or help disseminate the information on our funding programs. And for example, last year, we worked with Human Relations Commissions, Gang Prevention and International Affairs, as well as our Office of Immigrant Affairs. We will do the same this year, in addition to working with our Office of Racial Equity when that staff is in place. Last year also, as you may remember from our presentation, we worked with trusted community partners like RISE and Casa Familiar to help us get the word out. We will do the same this year as well and reach out into networks like the YMCA and other community anchors. We have already begun discussion with the city Heights CDC to help us get the word out in that part of the city. And finally, internally, Mayor Gloria has recently established new advisory groups, including an African-American Advisory Group and an AAPI group, and we will work closely with them to better access also their stakeholders. Parallel to this, we will also continue with our internal targeted research to connect with arts and culture organizations that have never applied to our funding opportunities before, or, and to those also very important, importantly, to those organizations that have applied in the past but were not successful due to our internal barriers. All of this represent internal implementations and expansions that city staff will lead as part of their mission to support our vibrant arts and culture landscape in the city. Many of these also that we shared with you respond to recommendations that were included in the RISE DI report. And of course, we will be, will continue on, count on members of the commission to help us reach deeper into all of the city council districts. So the third point, administrative priority in the next slide will be additional initiatives and additional efforts in keep on reducing barriers for applicants. And these translate also in looking at our guidelines and application requirements. We will review guidelines over the summer with great intentionality, especially around our DI recommendations, as well as including simple refinements to remove any redundancies. Our goal is to only ask for information that is needed and will be used. And ultimately, we believe that these changes will benefit all applicants and hopefully make the application process an experience that is not to be dreaded by any of them. So these past few slides related to changes, again, that city staff is currently working on and that can be implemented at the administrative level. There are a few revisions also that can be made if council policy is revised, and that will allow for additional changes. And these include, if we go to the next slide, please. Having more clarity around eligibility requirements. So right now, an OSP recipient can be based in the city of San Diego or outside of the city if they can demonstrate that they're serving a majority of San Diego audience. These parameters were put in place decades ago, like literally thirty-plus years ago, when the arts ecosystem in San Diego was very different and not nearly as built out as it is now. In addition, we know that the size of our funding program has not grown at the same pace, at least as the need for support that our arts and culture organizations have in our city. So therefore, we are proposing that OSP applicants must be based in the city limits in order to be eligible for OSP funding. Those organizations that are not based in San Diego would still be able to continue to apply for CCSD funding for programming that is produced in the city of San Diego, such as arts education and festivals. And the other two adjustments to these eligibility requirements and clarification around them relate to CCSD applicants. So currently, a CCSD applicant based outside the city of San Diego may apply for funding for a project that is produced outside of the city if they prove that they are benefiting San Diego residents. What we are proposing is that CCSD organizations may be based outside of San Diego, but the actual program funded must be based within the city limits. So these changes will ensure that we are prioritizing the use of TOT, arts and culture funds inside the city to drive tourism dollars and ensure that we are impacting our communities directly. And then the second change is related to audit requirements for both our OSP and CCSD applicants that currently find themselves having to submit an audit in order to receive city funding but are not required to do so to comply with state auditing guidelines related to charity organizations. So currently, any organization that receives seventy-five thousand dollars or more through OSP or, or CCSD is required to submit an audit to the city. However, many of these organizations are not required to do so by the state or the IRS. So we would like to align our guideline requirements with the state guidelines and introduce an intermediate level of financial disclosure, asking only organization with a budget of over two million dollars that are awarded seventy-five thousand dollars or more to submit an audit, which would be the same one that they anyways would need to submit to the state of California in order to be compliant with state tax requirements. So as you can understand, this will remove both a costly reporting barrier and align us also with state standards. And as Chair Bossler mentioned, today's presentation is focused on fiscal year twenty-three. However, we have a few big picture priorities for fiscal year twenty-four and beyond that will require substantial research and some policy changes. And we wanted to share also those with you today. So in the next slide, we can see what we're working for, forward to. So we recognize and affirm that OSP and CCSD are foundational programs. In addition to expanding access to this category, In addition to expanding access to these categories, as we shared in the previous slides, we know that we need to to add some flexible categories that will allow us to meet the needs of individual artists and allow us to target funds towards special initiatives as well. One example that we have in mind is city artist, which would be specifically designed for individual artists and groups of artists. And the other example is what we call the impact category, which will allow for funding to be directed as necessary. And fundings will allow for targeted strategic initiatives that could range from supportive inclusive sector growth to cultural equity, creative entrepreneurship, bi-national art projects, international cultural tourism and more. These categories would argument the two foundational categories and not replace them or complete them. And then the efficiency, transparency and equity of the algorithm of a model has been discussed for many years now. And in fiscal year 23, we would like to conduct a thorough review of the model looking at national best practices at our local and and our local priorities. This will take considerable time and community input and may or may not be achievable in one fiscal year. And finally, our program software is not extremely user-friendly for organizations or staff, and we hope to ask for funding in fiscal year 24 within the city budget for a new software that will expedite and minimize time on the part of both staff and the organizations applying to our programs. So as you can see from this short presentation, staff is addressing different levels of intervention to improve our application cycle, but also truly listen to our constituents and ultimately support our communities and contract partners as best as possible. We are thrilled that some new changes are going to be implemented as early as fiscal year 22. And we do look forward to keeping on improving our system and models in the short term and in the long term. And because this is only a preliminary conversation today, we will definitely bring more details back in June to our Policy and Funding Committee meeting on the eleventh and also work on the next steps after we receive input. So this concludes the presentation. And if our commissioners have comments or questions before we move on to the next item and open it up to public comment, please feel free to share them now.
So before we call on Tyler, let me ask this. We had someone who asked the question with respect to the data arts and the elimination. Does that begin in fiscal year 22?
So we are introducing Jonathan, did you want to go ahead?
No, please go ahead, Deanna.
In the so for the for the final report that organizations will receive soon for fiscal for the fiscal year, the closing fiscal year, we are piloting some of these questions that will be that were in data arts. And then I let Jonathan add on to that.
I'm sorry to punt here, I'm going to give it to Christine Jones.
Okay, so that arts eliminated already. So we've incorporated some of the questions that are important to us in terms of identifying economic impact into the final report. But they're minimal in comparison to what organizations would have to go through with regards to completing a data cultural report, data arts cultural report.
Okay, thank you for that. Tyler, you had requested to speak, please feel free. Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Deanna. This was a great presentation and bravo Christine and to the whole team for being able to make these changes. Holdout, I mean, this is fantastic. I may be the only person in San Diego who's going to mourn data arts going away, but I loved it and it's, you know, it's the numbers geek in me. I loved it and I love seeing change over time. The question I had, Deanna, is there a way to expand the technical assistance? I know we're hampered by city policy on social media. But if we can get changes made from city council on expanding our use of social media, can we introduce technical assistance, like through a Facebook Live event, those kinds of things? And can you speak to, and this is off the cuff, so so feel free to say, I don't have an idea for that. We don't have a plan for that. But if we have social media viability and exposure, can we leverage that in the cultivation of new applicants? Because that's where applicants or potential applicants are living.
I, Deanna, I'm happy to take that question. Thank you, Tyler, for that. Couple of quick comments. Absolutely, being able to access multiple social media platforms would be incredibly helpful for, excuse me, ongoing training, including Facebook Live, as you said. In addition to that, just a reminder, we do have the Twitter platform right now. So I'd love to use this opportunity to remind everybody to follow us on Twitter and to help to spread the word. But yes, would be much more impactful if for no other reason, through the equity lens, if we had multiple communications platforms to work with.
And if I can add something that I it's an idea. But as we've been expanding community partners, for example, if we could leverage their their social media and their presence, that would be great. So potentially, maybe that could mean that they could host, if we cannot host a Facebook Live event, Navas as guests to talk about our programs, that would be another idea.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioner D'Enzo.
I'm over the moon, actually. I mean, I think that some of these changes are really, really amazing. And you guys have heard me over and over and over again, talk about outreach and accessibility for smaller projects and individual artists. And I am just ecstatic that these items are being considered and that they are on the horizon for people, especially like the insurance requirements being eliminated. Christine, my God, that's amazing. That is amazing news. It's actually a game changer for like so many different organizations. The cultivation of new applicants, you know, getting out there in the community, making sure that, you know, everybody knows about this. This is like a critical, critical outreach thing. If if people don't know that we're here, then what good are we, right? I mean, we're, you know, just going to give money to the same people who show up every single time. But we really want to get out there and get new applicants and interesting new projects for the city and, you know, that kind of stuff. And then the city artist potential for 24 is so, so cool. I can't, I don't even know how to express how thrilled I am to hear about that potential. So, you know, keep up the good work. You guys have incredible ideas. I feel like the commissioners just sit around and wait for you guys to come up with these great ideas. And then we just, you know, wave our wand and say, yes, that's awesome, or no, that's not awesome. But you guys are, you guys are pretty much leading the charge here, and the commissioners are here to support you. And I think that the jobs that you guys are doing and the and the the willingness to do this kind of work is so, so important. And you guys totally know how I feel about all social media. And I think that we really need to get another social media channel, because not everybody does Twitter. You know, we got some got some anti-Twitter people out there, but you've got anti-Facebook people too. But it's it's just another opportunity to reach people. So thank you to to the staff and everybody who's forward-thinking. And I'm just really looking forward to the next couple of years of changes. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Hughes, did you want to speak again?
Yeah, thank you. Just as we look at the change from contract for service to financial support, I think that's a that's a massive mentality shift for all of the city. And I wonder if it's something we where we need to go back to code on our mission. Because our mission is in a lot of ways, our mission is economic, like our stated mission is economic focus. It's to bring, I don't have it in front of me, but it's, you know, to basically use San Diego as a tourist, use arts and culture as a San Diego tourist attraction element. And I wonder if there is a time for us to revisit that mission more in line with the idea of financial support and the promotion of San Diego arts organizations as a benefit to the citizens of San Diego, rather than as the financial engine that we all know them to be.
Jonathan, did you want to speak to that or who's best to speak to that?
I'm happy to make a comment. That's such an appreciated comment. I'll say, you know, always we need to be in alignment with the general guidelines of the TOT funding municipal code and council policy. With that said, this is, I would suggest that this is a perfect time for the Arts Commission to think about your, the mission and really what our role is community-wide, not just from the from the perspective of the commission itself, but the work of arts and culture and how the work of the commission and the city's investment in arts and culture aligns with the larger work of the city and the city's priorities at this point. So yes, I would wholly support that.
Okay, terrific. And Commissioner Putra, you also wanted to speak?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, staff. Great job. I can't help but follow on what Tyler is saying and thinking about really shifting the paradigm about where the money comes from, rather than this fluctuating amount, depending on how many people decide to come and visit San Diego and, you know, a bed tax being the source of our funding. Maybe maybe this is the time to also start looking at shifting that paradigm. Where does the money come from? And thinking about it more as an investment rather than a response to tourism. Also, I want to mention, I don't know if you noticed, Anne, but Felicia Shaw had wanted to speak too.
Yes, I'm just making sure commissioners have an opportunity and then we'll rotate to the to the public. Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Great, thanks.
And thank you. Any other comment from commissioners before we go to Ms. Shaw?
Just a huge shout out again to the staff. Sorry, just a huge shout out again to staff for putting in the time and effort to to bring this to the fore. And thank you to the public. Thank you to our community partners for holding our feet to the fire. And, you know, we know that this is now the new ground level, and we have to keep building on top of that. This is this is inspiring and exciting and all the reasons why I wanted personally to get involved in the commission.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, staff. And also a big thank you to Jonathan Jonathan in setting the tempo for all of this. So we will cha-cha-cha when we see each other again in person. How about that? At this point, I'm going to turn it back to Deanna to call on whatever attendees would like to speak.
Yes, so I believe that at this point, we can move to the second agenda item.
Before before we do that, could we take comment from those folks that wanted to comment? So Felicia Shaw and also a Michael Rennie?
Yes, I thought. I am looking at Christine, is this is in line with the Brown Act or since we already had public comments before, we need to move.
Their comments are probably related to the last item, so I think it's fine.
Perfect, so it was.
Felicia Shaw and then Michael Rennie, and then anybody else that wanted to speak on this item before we go on to the next.
Yes, yes. So Felicia Shaw, I'm going to allow you to talk now, and you have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes. Yes, well, first of all, kudos to staff. And thank you so very much for all the time and effort you put into coming back to the community with these recommendations. I'm actually jealous that, you know, everything you have on your wish list are the things that I wanted to help implement years ago when I was a member of staff at the commission. But I do have one question, and I don't know if this is the point to ask it or if it could be answered later on. When we talk about DEI equity, it absolutely moves beyond racial and ethnic equity. Are we looking at geographic diversity as well? That potentially funds might be distributed and allocated more equitably across all of the council districts, particularly council districts that historically have been underserved and just do not have cultural assets embedded within their communities. So that's my question about equity and how it's showing up in terms of geographic diversity across the city.
I can gladly take that one. So probably most people in the audience know that there's limitations on how we can direct TOT funding into the community due to some state regulations. However, we do have a number of tools that we can use more intentionally than perhaps we have in the past. Communities of concern being one of those tools that our planning department in particular uses, excuse me, Economic Development Department and Planning Department both use those tools to encourage investment in those parts of the city. So those are, in addition to our technical assistance and outreach, those are things that can be realized through the panel deliberation and the scoring process. I hope that helps.
Next would be Michael Rennie.
Thanks so much. Am I audible?
Yes, we can hear you.
So my comments probably fall under the category of public comment on priorities for fiscal year 2023. Is this the appropriate time to speak?
Yes, Michael, that would be fine.
Wonderful. So first and foremost, on behalf of the Board of Poway On Stage, our staff and our supporters, I guess I should introduce myself. I'm Michael Rennie. I'm the Executive Director for Poway On Stage. And I want to thank the commission for your OSP contract for the last several years. You've made it possible to provide high-quality performing arts to the residents of North San Diego. I also want to recognize and thank the staff for the incredible work that led into this presentation. Apropos of Felicia's comments a moment ago, if you look at a district map of San Diego, District Five, which is a historically underserved district in San Diego with the arts, basically wraps around the city of Poway. The majority of Poway On Stage's supporters and patrons reside within San Diego Districts Five and Six, and we provide arts and culture experiences to more than sixty-four hundred San Diego residents each year. Additionally, our Arts and Education Initiative provides massive support for the Poway Unified School District, sixty-five percent of whose schools are actually located within San Diego District Five. So that also accounts for more than three thousand students that Poway On Stage reaches each year with arts programs that they would not otherwise have. For these reasons and more, I would ask that you reconsider not so much where our desks are located, but rather the people we serve live and consider the 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 terms of who qualifies. but rather the people we serve live and consider the, the terms of who qualifies for OSP support. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Michael. Commissioner Hughes, did you also wish to speak?
Thank you, Commissioner Bosler. I just wanted to use this opportunity, especially as we're talking about a fundamental rethink of our role. And as Felicia and Michael both pointed out, a understanding of where constituents are being served in terms of diversity, that this is the perfect time to revisit, my favorite thing, the cultural plan. Because integrating all of this change, all of this massive, fundamental, exciting, dynamic change will fall flat after a couple of years if we don't have a more holistic cultural plan for our city and for our region. So I just want to refocus us on that as a priority. And I hope that everybody listening to this will join us in that advocacy for a cultural plan from the city, for funds for a cultural plan from the city council.
Okay, thank you for that. Peter Kaminski, did you also want to say something?
So we have a few raised hands. I want to, so just want to make sure that, that then the audience is aware that they can raise their hand if they want to, would like to make a public comment and we'll go, we'll unmute them. So, yes, we can start to Peter Kaminski.
Thank you, Chair Bosler. And just a top level comment. Thank you very, very much for running this, this session this evening. While we will get good comment tonight, I guarantee that next time, the comments will be more and the time after that, it will be, it will be increasing. So people will get used to these being in the evening. It's very much appreciated as major policy is rolled out that these are held after hours, after normal operating hours. I am, I am amazed at the elimination of insurances. I can't tell you how many small organizations have complained about that for years. I think data arts is important. Insurances is a game changer, as Tracy mentioned. Elements like rapid contract approvals are fantastic. And I very much look forward to hearing on the 11th more about the proposed policy changes that you are, which we're looking for and to work through. I think as both Tyler and Janet mentioned, the focus on TOT is the only funding stream. I think offers great opportunity for diversity and, and moving beyond that. I think we can certainly do work to lock it in as a core funding stream. And I feel like there is always going to be that need to balance economic development and community growth, though in reality, both of those are critically important. And then finally, for, for 24 and beyond, I think it's, it's great to hear the commitment to OSP, operating support, is by far the hardest funding to raise. And I think it was a discussion by a person in Eureka, the Eureka Cultural District, who said that the community knows what the community wants. And so as long as you get that funding to the communities, try not as hard as you can. Try not to dictate program. Try to provide that operating support and amazing program will follow. And then finally, Tyler, you've got to get a cultural plan. I don't care what we do, cultural plan has to be funded and the city has to support it. So you keep yelling that from the rooftops and it will always be supported. Thank you so much for tonight.
Thank you. And we have another hand raised. And so John Hyken, I'm going to allow you to talk now and you have three minutes.
There we go. Can you hear me okay? Thank you. I'm John Hyken. I'm at Fern Street Community Arts and I have been involved in commission contracting and grant writing since 1990. And I have to say that this is the most fundamentally amazing change. And I'm, I found it very unexpected and I'm very thrilled. I think in a way, I remember the old Neighborhood Arts Program, which was in the 90s. And this is an even more, it seems to me, more fundamentally sound way of expanding the reach of the commission in terms of equity and of education of especially entrepreneurial artists and organizations of, especially that, that have multiple cultural or language barriers. So I'm, I'm thrilled, I'm just, and I'm surprised. It seems so real and positive. I like the things that you all are proposing for simplification. I think that's really important. And especially expansion to other organizations and, and fiscal sponsorship. But something that a number of us have advocated for and have returned to it. And I have to say that in 1990, when I first came to the commission with an idea, it was with a fiscal sponsor. It was an old Stage Seven Dance Theater. And that has made, that made it possible for us to come into and be a contractor for now going on 30 years. And we actually have a fiscal sponsorship policy for our organization and do fiscal sponsorship for several organizations. And we'll be really happy to participate in especially working in economic development in City Heights where we're located. But overall, I'm just thrilled and I thank you all so much for doing this and, and for, for all the calmness and imagination that you were showing. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, everyone. Deanna, if there's no more hands raised and no more commissioner comments, should we move on to the next agenda item in the sake of time?
Yes, perfect. So the next agenda item includes public comments. So there were no written public comments that were submitted for, for the agenda item. But we already had some from the public. But if you are interested in submitting, in making a public comment now, please click the button to raise your hand to indicate that you would like to comment and I will enable you to speak. Send you a prompt to unmute yourself. And when I call your name, please know that you have three minutes to provide comment, after which you will be placed on mute again. If you're joining over the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. I will call on you by the last four digits of your phone number. And when I call on you, please press star six to unmute yourself. So if anyone else would like to make any comments, please raise your hand now and I will make sure to unmute you. There is one and it's Veronica Murphy. Veronica, I'm going to unmute you now and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'll be very quick. I'm Veronica Murphy, the artistic director of Write Out Loud. This question is actually not for me because I'm in the city of San Diego, but for another organization that is out. And I just wanted to clarify, the funding for organizations that are outside the city, but, and I'm talking about OSP now, but serve a majority of people from in the city, is that eligibility going away or is that continuing?
Thank you for that comment, Veronica. So we're proposing that, that eligibility would go away as an OSP recipient? That organization, if it is based outside of San Diego, could conduct programming in San Diego, but they would not receive, be eligible for OSP funding?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, at this point, to keep the meeting moving forward, I'm going to say again, this is a, next item is informational only with no action. The primary purpose is for public information input regarding the potential refinements to fiscal year 23 funding guidelines. We can take comment on fiscal 24, fiscal year 24 and beyond during this meeting as well. And I ask the public to be sure to prioritize fiscal year 23 as we will be taking action on proposed refinements at our June commission meeting. Before we open it up to public comments, staff, were there any comments submitted through the public comment web form to be read regarding this agenda item?
No public comments were submitted.
Okay, with that, I'll turn it back to you, Deanna.
Yes, thank you. And again, if anyone would like to make any public comments right now, please make sure to raise your hand and I will unmute you, call your name and you will have three minutes to provide comment. I don't see any hands raised. I wanted to acknowledge a comment that came through the chat. I can't see who wrote it, but it says, perhaps some extra training and workshops in the traditionally underserved areas could help get the funding on a more equitable level. Still no other public comments as of now.
Commissioner Hughes is always, always a funny one. So, Deanna, was there more for you to be able to share at this point?
So, go ahead, Jonathan.
That's the end of the staff presentation. I would like to share that we'll bring more details to the June 11 meeting of policy and funding, based on the input of this meeting tonight.
Okay, terrific. Any other comment from any commissioners?
Chair Bosler, we do have, I believe, no, it went down. There was a hand that was raised, but for a public comment, but never mind.
Okay, seems mission accomplished. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Thank you for your insight. Appreciate your attending, commissioners and staff. Thank you so much. And the commission will be meeting for its regular monthly policy and funding committee meeting on June 11th at noon. And at this point, I'm seeing some comments popping up here. Okay, hugs all around, apparently. Thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Nice work.
Thank you.
Nice work, everyone. And I just can't believe all these things that we got just switched like it was nothing. And I'm like, wow, why hasn't that happened yet? But it's so great. Good job, everyone.
Very exciting. It's really, really exciting, except for the painful death of my dear friend, Data Arts. I will be holding a memorial service and sponsoring the first bottle of whiskey.
Just a reminder, we're still being recorded, y'all.
Yep. Thank you for that reminder.
Christine, great job, though, on the insurance thing. That is huge, huge, huge. That's really great and congratulations for that. That, that's some heavy lifting right there. Thanks, everybody. See you all Friday.
You tried it.
Bye, guys.